...meeting for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is kind of exciting. We usually don't have anybody here, but now we have a full house. It's great. Thank you for coming. The second item on the agenda is audience comments that aren't on the agenda. Is there anybody that wants to speak? Go ahead and come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Dale Morris, 4655 Gaga Road, Port Orchard, Washington. My main question, if once this rezoning is completed, are they going to reassess all the properties and raise all the property taxes?
So, um, this is the point in the meeting for comments for items not on the agenda. The time to talk about the map and then this will be a little bit later on, in just a few minutes. But the tax assessor looks at the zoning and the regulations in place for a particular property and they assess properties. So that's their role. We don't determine assessments here. But conceivably, yes, it can be adjusted up or down depending on what action is taken.
My second question, what prompted this rezoning? The people didn't ask for it.
So I'm going to give an overview of that when we get into that agenda item, which is, this is general comments right now for items not on the agenda.
Okay.
So seeing no other comments, we're going to move on to business item number three. A, public hearing, the 2017 comprehensive plan amendment. And Nick, do you want to say anything first?
Yes, I wanted to start by thanking everybody who's here tonight because this is more people than I've seen at a public meeting in Port Orchard in the four and a half years that I've been here. And so thank you for coming out. And I guess I need to make a plug for a couple of things that we're doing while I have such a wide audience. And I wanted to share with everybody that the city has just initiated a Bethel and Sedgwick corridor study to determine what transportation improvements we're going to be making in those corridors. And I would invite all of you to follow the city on the website through Facebook. And you're going to probably hear a little bit about those items in the near future, including opportunities for participation. We are also working with a firm on creating design guidelines to hopefully improve the quality of some new development in the city. And so we're also going to be having an open house this fall, asking for participation. So I hope that some of the people here will continue to be involved in the process. So with that said, tonight we have the 2017 comprehensive plan amendments for the city. There are a handful of applications that are before us, the majority of which are map amendments. And as the gentleman asked at the beginning of the meeting, what initiated these map amendments? And I wanted to give you a little history of that. First of all, the city has annexed a tremendous amount of land in the last 10 years. We, it's about five square miles to be exact. We've gone from a city of five square miles to a city of 10 square miles. And a lot of that annexation happened at a time when staff cuts were occurring and there wasn't a whole lot of time to plan what different areas of the city would look like. The majority of the amendments that are here tonight have to do with the Blackjack Creek watershed. And currently, the Saquamish tribe is putting the finishing touches on a new study for habitat restoration and protection along Blackjack Creek. And so as part of that study, we've been talking with the stakeholders there about how to protect Blackjack Creek. And we realized that when we annexed this area, the area to the south of Lund and a little bit to the north of Lund had been given a green belt designation that was simply a 100-foot ribbon on either side of the creek that was to protect it without looking at any of the steep slopes, the critical areas, the wetlands, any of the design, the constraints that were present for those properties. And so our department initiated a study, a very basic study, but looking at digital data and mapping. And we outlined kind of where the most sensitive areas of Blackjack Creek existed and set out to designate those areas as green belt. So the, the, one of the requirements of planning under the Growth Management Act is that we have to make sure that we have adequate supply of land to accommodate our projected growth within a certain timeframe. And in this case, we have a 20-year comprehensive plan. And so in order to designate green belt on sensitive areas, we're effectively downzoning those properties and reducing the development potential, although given the constraints that are there, that property may not be as developable as the zoning would indicate. So the city set out to figure out where to put that land capacity. And so the areas that are being upzoned adjacent to Blackjack Creek are essentially seeing growth transferred from the sensitive area to the non-sensitive area in a way that balances. So that is the gist of the amendments around Blackjack Creek. I think one of the other constraints in that area is that a lot of the existing roads and infrastructure is pretty substandard. It was developed to a rural standard. The roads don't have sidewalks. They don't have stormwater drainage, other than the occasional ditch on the side of the road. And in order to develop any of those areas, it's going to come at great expense and is likely not feasible, given the current densities that exist. And so part of this effort is also to make development more viable and to hopefully get developers to pay for the needed road improvements in those areas. Finally, and I guess that can be illustrated, I think, if any of you are familiar with the Blueberry Road area right now, Geiger, Ramsey, Blueberry, there's development occurring there that was a county-approved project from before annexation. And those developers are making off-site road improvements to bring those roads up to a higher standard. Not necessarily the highest standard, but that was what the county allowed them at the time. And so it is our hope that by allowing density that's similar to what the county approved then, which currently wouldn't be allowed, that more of those types of improvements can be built by developers to benefit the existing residents of that area. There are a handful of other amendments throughout the city. Most of those are not as expansive as what's proposed for Blackjack Creek. The McCormick Woods Amendment, I'm guessing a lot of people here tonight are here for that particular issue. And we've certainly received a lot of comments on that. The development, or the amendment that was proposed by the developer, McCormick Woods LLC, was withdrawn. And so if you're here to testify on that tonight, there's no proposed action on that any longer. The developer had come to us in June, and it was actually a week and a half before the deadline for applying for these amendments. And they had a proposal that they wanted to build a community center. And when we looked at the zoning out there, which is single-family, eight units per acre, a community center isn't allowed without a conditional use permit. And so we talked to them about the options for how they could develop their property for that intended use. And we said, you either need to get a rezone to zone it to something where this would be permitted outright, or you need to apply for a conditional use permit. And because of the timing, the rezone and comp plan amendment process was going to be more, I guess, more timely for them than going through the conditional use permit process. However, as we learned, as a lot of people have reached out to us in the last couple of weeks, excuse me, the, the problem with zoning that is commercial is that even though we believe the developer has every intention of building a community center there, it does open the door that they could put any commercial use there, despite how it affected the community. And so what the developer decided to do is withdraw their application and go back to meet with the HOA and talk to the residents of McCormick about the community center and try to figure out a plan for a conditional use permit, which they intend to submit at a later date, once they've done a more robust outreach process. So that one is withdrawn. And finally, there's a handful of other amendments that I'm going to go through on a, as we start talking about the seven maps that are before you. I would like to take this on tonight by going through the maps in order so that we take public testimony on a specific map. Then the Planning Commission deliberates on any changes to that map before moving on to the next map. Because I'd hate for you to start working on map seven and then take all the testimony and then come back and have to deliberate on all the maps in that order. So I'd just like to see a round of hand, or a show of hands. How many people are here for the McCormick Woods issue tonight? Okay. And how many are here for properties along Blackjack Creek? All right. So I think we should start with the Blackjack Creek properties, just in the interest of getting as many people the opportunity to speak as soon as possible, in case they would like to leave early. So in that case, I would like to take this on, beginning with map number, let's start with map number four. And this is, I'm going to zoom into the general area of map number four here on the screen. It's a slightly different map that you see here, but I can access information about these properties. So generally, and so for map, and this is going to be true of all of the maps that are here tonight. Each map number, so map number four, there is a comprehensive plan map, and then there's a zoning map. The comprehensive plan is the overarching designation that goes into our planning document, whereas the zoning is the legislative regulation that's in our zoning code. And so the zoning is more specific than the comprehensive plan designation. And so for instance, on map four, you'll see several properties that are, that are in the bright yellow, medium-density residential. And then if you turn to the zoning map, medium-density residential corresponds with both residential eight units per acre and residential 12 units per acre. Oh, 4A, I see. So, so on this map,
Excuse me, Nick, I have a four and a 4A.
That's correct. And that's because we've made subsequent revisions to this based on the testimony that's been received. And actually, before I get into the specifics of this, I think,
Look, if I can just make it a little more clear, in the packets that you received, you have a set of maps. So this one sort of replaces it, but not completely. When you go through this map set, you'll see a final recommendation. And that's just, that's just a single page, not before and after, so like map one has had changes to it since the Planning Commission packet went out. So this is the final recommendation from map one. If you look at map two, this is actually the same as what's in the Planning Commission packet. There were no changes proposed by staff on that map. And map 4A, actually, what that is, is there were some properties that are a little bit off to the east. And we couldn't quite get them to fit on this map. So actually, four and 4A do represent the final staff recommendations. They're just a slightly different variation of the area, so we can bring in everything at once.
So, before I get into this, the maps that came in your packet, they showed the original zoning, the original comprehensive plan designation, and they were split side by side. And so the maps that you see where there's two vertical maps next to each other, that was the original proposal. The big maps that were handed out most recently are the final recommendation from the staff that differ from the initial maps. And what we did, we provided a comment log and we received, I think, probably, what, 50 or 60 different comments? 62 different comments from people who were questioning what was being done, either testimony supporting what was being done, or questions or concerns about their individual property. And so I think in every instance where we received testimony from somebody, we've accommodated their request and we've worked with them directly to find a solution that works for them. This isn't an issue where the city is looking to impose additional regulations on somebody. It's more of a pragmatic exercise in making sure that our zoning matches the constraints of development in that vicinity and that we're balancing any downzones with corresponding upzones to keep our residential development capacity in check. So on map four, you will see that the green belt has been expanded moderately to the north of Lund and considerably to the south of Lund. On the north side of Lund, specifically off of Harold, nearly all of those properties had been zoned for R4.5, which is 4.5 units per acre. That's a zone that prior to any annexation was below the minimum zone that the county allowed in residential areas. The county's zoning designation was R5 to 9, which said that you had to have a minimum of five units per acre and a maximum of nine. When the city annexed some of these areas, we actually downzoned them upon annexation to limit them to 4.5 units per acre, rather than letting them realize they're, they're 5 to 9. However, the city doesn't have a 5 to 9 designation. We only have the R8 designation, which is residential eight units per acre. So in most cases, we've tried to change residential properties from 4.5 to 8 where there are no environmental constraints and where there's adequate access and connectivity in terms of our roads. There were some properties that had private roads or were really difficult to get to that we left in R4.5. But for the most part, you'll see that they are going to residential medium density with either an R8 or an R12 density. The R12 density was put, was put in place in areas that are reasonably close to commercial areas where there's a high potential for people to walk to either the grocery store, which this, obviously you have Safeway and Walmart right there at Bethel and Lund. And so this provides people an opportunity to walk to local businesses, to go to the grocery store, to get things that they need without necessarily having to get into their car. And also provides development of a sufficient density to make the necessary improvements that are going to be needed to Harold, to Lundberg, and to the intersection of Lundberg and Bethel, which is going to need to be a controlled intersection in all likelihood at some point in the future and likely before any development could occur out there. So we've worked with a handful of properties, as I mentioned. We just talked to the most recent one today, which was just south of Lundberg Park. And so on map 4A, you'll see that that now has a residential 12, and then it transitions to a residential eight to the west, and then goes to green belt. And we worked with that property owner on that specific amendment. So with that said, I would like to give anybody who is, has property in the map marked Zone 8 the opportunity to, to provide testimony in favor or against a proposed amendment. And I don't know if,
So you want to take public hearing?
Yeah, we'll take public testimony. Let's, let's open the public hearing, but let's limit the initial testimony to properties on map number four.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing to take testimony on property owners that in map four. And if you could just limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great. And any concerned citizens in the area, you also can come up?
If it has a number four on it, you can provide testimony at this point in time. The 4A is the final staff recommendation. And it's the fourth one in the packet that was printed here tonight. There's four, there's four maps that are designated map four, and it's the 4A zoning map.
So if they're on map four, then they can speak now? Is that what you're?
I think that's the most orderly way to handle this.
I want to be on the same page as you. Okay.
So do you want to open the hearing?
Yeah. So the public hearing is now open. Does anybody want to step up and state your name and address?
My name is Tim Mathis. I live at 401 Bothwell Street here in Port Orchard. To begin with, I don't know, it was always my impression that you couldn't limit testimony to any number of minutes in a public hearing. So correct me if I'm, so you can't limit the folks to three minutes. Okay? Second thing is, these maps, they don't help us understand what's going on here. I'd like to go back to the maps that have been on the website for the last two weeks that show the ying and the yang, that show the way it is now and the way it is proposed for map number four. Can you get that up on here for me? It's very important because my next comments have a lot to do with that map. And it has to show, or we should show the folks again, the, the way it is now and the way it is proposed. And the way the maps are presented tonight, we don't have the way it is now.
I apologize, I'm not connected to the network, so I'm pulling this up with the city webpage. Is it under 2017, right?
You're going faster than I did the first time.
Which one am I? The top ones? Okay. So this is the most recent thing that's on the website, which is the single map for the initial land use map and zoning map. So this is the initial.
Okay, there's the one, that's, thank you. That's exactly the one. The one on, if you're looking right straight at it, the one on the left-hand side is the green belt as it is today. You see the, the green belt? That follows roughly Blackjack Creek. And it gives 100 feet on either side. And, and that's state mandated if I build, if I'm,
It's now 200 feet on either side for shoreline.
Okay. So that, does that represent 200 feet, 200 feet on either side? Because it's important, my next testimony says it's a big, it's a big amount of land that we're talking about.
I want to zoom in. This is roughly the area that we're dealing with. And here's the, critical areas. So when you look at the critical areas in this area and you look at the geologically hazardous areas in pink, and then the flood area is the crosshatch in blue along Blackjack Creek here. And I realize this is very lightly colored. Do you want to dim the lights for the projector, Carrie?
It's the middle.
I don't know if that's a little better. In any event, you can see the areas that are shaded in red on either side of the flood plain. Those are the steep slopes, and that's where the topo lines are representing the ravine, essentially.
Okay. But the question was, is the, the existing map highlighted in blue 200 feet each side or 100 feet each side?
It's, it's not 200 feet each side. And the, the problem with that ribbon is that the stream is represented by a very thin line on the map. It doesn't actually measure the ordinary high watermark on either side of the creek. And so it's measured from that thin line on the map. And so even if it's 100 or 200, it's 200 from the middle of the channel, not from the banks where you're required to measure from.
Okay. Can we go back to the, the two-panel picture then?
Yep.
The snake, the green snake, I just wanted to know how wide that is.
I, I'm going to try to scale it for you real quick. For some reason, the measuring tool always appears and disappears on the county website, and I have no idea why it is not currently there. Let me see if I can generate a, I think if I, I think it'll put a scale on here if I,
I didn't scale it, but I thought it represented 400 feet, 200 on the side, approximately.
Zoom out.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just go back to that panel, and I'll finish my testimony, which was pretty simply that if you look on the right side, you'll see all the new green. You look on the left side, you'll see the, the small amount of green. To me, and I did a rough, just a rough estimate of over 50% increase. It could be 5%, either way, but it's over 50% increase. In taking, because that in fact is what you're doing. You're taking somebody's rights here for a green belt. Now, I grant you, in some cases, you, you might allow them a little bit of use, maybe. But you're still taking a lot from those folks. And I just can't, I just can't abide by those kind of carte blanche, large-scale takings. So that, I, I testify that we should, we should take care of Blackjack. And we have been taking care of Blackjack. And as a matter of fact, a couple of years ago, we, we just, we, we stopped the plan of going a trail up the center of Blackjack just because we didn't want to have people going up there and abusing a very pristine area. So it's not that I'm against, you know, protecting, but I'm against protecting when there's, there's no value given to the property owner. And in this case, I'm afraid of it. There was a couple of testimonies that says, well, there's steep slopes in the area, and that's a problem. We have regulations, you can't get a building permit if you have a steep slope. You have to allow area setback from that slope. It's already in the regulations. We don't need to do it again and again to, to protect for steep slopes. There's probably some really problem properties there that can't be built on if you leave the little green snake up there. And, and that's, it's there there for protection. So I truly don't believe these large green belt areas that a few people are required to, to be penalized for all of us are the way that we should do it. So I would say, you know, that's way too big of an increase. And I don't, I don't like the way we've been going here. And that's, well, if you're affected, we'll, we'll talk to you specially. But if you're not affected, we're all affected. We're all in the city of Port Orchard affected by these regulations. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, it's, it's still red.
Was red?
Yeah. It was red, is red. From R8 to R12. You could provide that testimony.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this, map four? So seeing 90,
Oh, here's some.
Hi there. My name's James Van Cleef. I represent myself and my wife Celeste. We're at 2864 Harold. We own the two five-acre lots just adjacent to where Lundberg ends and Harold starts. And I'm really here tonight because, kind of like the gentleman before me, it's kind of a, when you look at the prior map and then you look at the new map, my entire back five, which was R4.5, is now our green belt, you know, nothing. So it basically takes our buffer and our investment property and turns it into zero-value property. And, and I, and I do appreciate Mr. Bond over here working, working with each individual person. He's, their office is incredibly quick at getting back to and very informational and working with me on getting an agreeable option. But I still think that the green belt feels to me like the soil samples and the, and the steep slope is used kind of as a, as leverage for them to do, to gain, to gain green belt where it's not necessarily needed. Because, because the best that, the best that we could do coming to agreement seemed to be basically only 10%. A little, little over 10% of our back five would be developable as, as R12, or I'm sorry, R8, which, which makes it more feasible to develop, but it still is nowhere near the steep slope. So it, not all of it makes complete sense. And it's already, like you said, it's really hard to develop. Mr. Morrison has been trying to develop property back there for 10 years, and it's just not feasible because of regulations. So. So making more greenbelt regulations where it's not necessary, it doesn't seem like the right thing to do to property owners. And also, I'm, I'm here just to, I understand that his plans might not be exactly what you guys decide on, so I just wanted to make aware that he did work really hard to, to come to an agreement. So if, if you guys do decide on going with the, the 4A instead of 4, or, or any other option, that it was, it was a good effort to come to agreement, so. Yeah, I guess that's all my testimony, I just wanted to kind of come up and make sure that people, the council was aware that people were being affected, and, and that their decisions are not, they're affecting people and not pieces of property, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I, may I ask a question of the, Mr. Van Cleef?
Cleef, yeah.
Cleef. So we, the solution that we discussed on the phone today.
Yeah.
The three Xs on the map show the, the final recommendation that I was providing.
Right.
Are you providing testimony that you'd rather be, stay how things are today?
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay.
I was just, I wanted them to know that the greenbelt is excessive, I think. Because where the slope starts, I'm, I'm happy with the agreement that we came to. That, that, that map right there, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
As opposed, as opposed to what, what it is today, I'm fine with that, too. But, but I'm definitely, that compared to what the initial, what the four map says, that's, I mean, that's way different.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're giving you what you need.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. We're on the same page, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
My name is Steve Jarrett, my address is 850 Higher Ground Lane. I would like to echo the feeling of the previous speaker about the excessive use of greenbelts to take property. I lost half of my property the last comprehensive plan change. But I was able to go work with Mr. Bond, and I sent a letter in, and, and I was not affected anymore by this, though I would lose all the rest of my property to greenbelt. We were able to come to an agreement to, to not affect me anymore, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I highlighted the location of the map, or the property that he just provided testimony on, it's, Harold Drive is here, and this is, at the end of Harold, there's these four larger parcels at the end there. And the proposal on that property was the front half would be R4.5, and the back half would be greenbelt.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on map four?
Well, and I just wanted to highlight that that particular property, I think we reverted to the original designation.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make, so, the recommendation from staff is to not change that property, and so that's been changed from our initial proposal. You want to ask if there's anybody else on this one?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you are.
Okay. So if there's no further questions on map number four, I'd like to ask the planning commissioners if they would like to ask any questions about the testimony that we've received, or about the proposed amendments shown on this map.
Can you talk a little bit, Nick, about the purpose for the amendment? I mean, what's the purpose, why is the city coming forward with this request?
So I think that when that initial ribbon that Mr. Mathis had mentioned here, on the left map there, you can see that that's, I believe it is a 200-foot ribbon, but it's from a, not an accurate representation of both banks of the stream, which is probably anywhere from 60 to 100 feet from ordinary high watermark to ordinary high watermark on either side of the creek. And so this doesn't correspond to the, the existing shoreline regulations, which are a little bit wider than that. But it also certainly doesn't match the, the topography and the most likely limitations on development. And our critical areas code does allow development on steep slopes up to a certain percentage slope. And so it's really a matter of cost and whether you can actually engineer something and, you know, drive pilings, you know, 70 or 100 feet into the, the earth to stick, you know, to build a stabilized structure. I think the idea here is that those steep slopes alone aren't going to eliminate development within that ravine, and where you're going to generate stormwater runoff, or potentially cause erosion or other potential is, issues. I know that the, in looking at the Blackjack Creek study that was prepared, a major concern is the amount of impervious surface that is allowed to be constructed within proximity to Blackjack Creek, because they would like to see as much water getting into the ground to recharge the, the water table, the aquifers. And that, that water eventually can make its way back into the creek, and so in the dry months, if you haven't allowed the water to get into the ground, you're essentially going to see lower in-stream flow. And, and so that's one of their concerns. And so I think, as you saw us in our discussion earlier, we've tried to make sure that as much as possible, people are made whole by, you know, upzoning their uphill portion of property while downzoning their downhill portion of property. And in most cases, something like that is possible, but not all. And in those cases where it's not possible, it's usually because the, the property is so constrained by those slopes, that the critical areas code is in all likelihood going to render the property mostly undevelopable. But it would still, if you could provide the geotechnical report, you could still cover the property with as much impervious surface as allowed by the underlying zoning. And so the R4.5 zone allows you to cover your site with 45% hard surface. The R8 zone allows for, I think it's 75% impervious surface. And so those higher-density zones allow much more coverage, whereas the greenbelt allows 15% coverage. And it does allow residential development, but it's one house per two acres instead of 4.5 houses per one acre.
So somebody who has a greenbelt, they can, I mean, it's, the property's not completely unusable?
No, it's definitely developable, there's a handful of uses that are allowed, including residential development. And so if somebody can manage to get a, a building site on a site that has steep slopes, they can still build one house there, it's that they are unable to further subdivide it, which would potentially result in multiple houses on a, a site like that. So really, the idea is to, you know, give the creek a little bit more of a buffer from intense development, but still allow development consistent with the greenbelt designation. And that's not, you know, that's not a public designation, it's not a park designation, it's, it's a very low-intensity but developable zone.
And that was one house for every two acres?
Correct. And I, I would add to that, the other, you know, one of the other concerns, and, you know, I'm sensitive to tax bills, especially as, as property values keep going up, I'm noticing my bill going up. And if you're holding property that through critical area changes has become less developable, but the assessor is still recognizing it as residential 4.5, you're potentially paying taxes for property that is less developable than the assessor would, would know. And there is a process for challenging that, and so if you think your property's not developable, but you want your zoning to stay the same, you can go down that road. But I think with the greenbelt designation, the assessor's going to be more aware of the limited development potential that exists, and, you know, presumably, they would take that into consideration when making assessments.
Have any other questions? So you guys have any other questions? My only concern is, there's so many people here, and there's very few people speaking.
Where's the overhead?
The previous map that we had up there?
I feel like they need to know we're actually listening. Because this is a big deal, there's a lot of people here. And I don't feel like they're getting any real answers yet.
Oh, it's on this map. There it goes.
I live at 623 Tufts Avenue East, Port Orchard. I actually live in the county. We're right on the edge. So we have these properties right here, and since the local sewer district replac the neighborhood, our water tables come up, we have water in our, in our crawl space in our house now. And I'm looking at an upsize to the, the orange area, increased density, and I'm concerned about the water being collected properly when that gets developed, and not forcing more runoff into our neighborhood.
So the city actually was required by the EPA through the Department of Ecology to adopt the newest Stormwater Management Manual just this last year. And so the 2012, 2014 revised Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual now applies, and it is the most stringent stormwater manual that the state has ever had, and, you know, presumably is going to go a long way to ensuring that, that development is going to have the least possible impact on water tables. To a large extent, though, stormwater is, is dictated by soils. And so if there's a high water table there.
Very high.
If, if the water table is already high, I think the stormwater matrix that you have to go through in that manual is going to direct you to a stormwater solution that's going to involve detaining water and then releasing it slowly over time into a drainage basin, as opposed to putting it, putting more water into the ground. And so, you know, in that, in that area, I think the, the safeguard is, is pretty robust. And regardless of whether it's R12 or R8, which I, it's currently R8 or is it currently R4? I think, so the, the change in the allowed hard surface there is going from 4.5, which allowed 45% lot coverage, to R12, which, off the top of my head, I believe is 75% lot coverage. And so that actually is going to result in potentially more roof, more pavement, more hard surface that's actually going to direct water away from the water table to a detention-type facility.
So when it comes time to actually develop those from the current residential that they are, will get a chance to weigh in on it?
It depends on what type of development would be proposed. Most of those are, those are large lot residential lots now, so it's possible they could be subdivided so that an additional house could be added onto a lot, or a house could be torn down, and it could be redeveloped with like a triplex or some sort of multifamily-type use.
Okay, I just don't want to have more water coming into my crawl space.
Yeah, I think the zoning isn't going to influence that as much as the stormwater management manual that the city has.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on map four? Okay. So do you want to move to?
Let's move on to map five, because I think that's probably, I'm guessing where a lot of people have come to talk about here tonight. Is just to the south of the area that was previously discussed. I want to pull it up here. So this is the area roughly between, kind of the, Walmart is just to the east of the top of the map, and at the bottom of the map, you have Blueberry, and you're approaching Sedgwick Avenue. So you can see the greenbelt has increased quite a bit. I'm going to point on the map here, if you can see where my mouse is, right here. This is the top of the slope where Blueberry starts going downhill to the creek, and so once you roll over the top of that hill, everything down in that valley is on septic. You're looking at constructing a lift station and having to pump sewage out of there if there were to be more intense-type development. All of that area was identified as a slope, geologically hazardous area. I'm going to try to zoom into that area here on the county's website. So when you turn on the critical areas layer here, you're going to see a whole bunch of red pop-up, and I'm going to put the, the contours on there, and you can see where the lines get real close together here, this is really the top of the ravine. And so our zoning map roughly follows the top of that ravine. This area down here off of Blueberry that I was talking about, there is a little bench at the bottom of the, the road there. But it's also, you know, pretty close to Blackjack Creek, and again, the cost of improving Blueberry Road would be quite high due to the slope, and also the need to put in sewer lift station. You're also, with only one way in and one way out, the fire code requires all houses to be fire-sprinkled, and so you're looking at having to have fire flow for fire suppression systems in, in any homes that would go in down there. And so that's why that particular area at the bottom of the hill was shown as greenbelt here, at the top of Blueberry here. The, this parcel that I've got my mouse on now, as well as the two to the east, and then two more to the east, these are two developments that were approved in the county, and that's where you see dirt being moved right now. That's the Andazio Village and the Blueberry Ridge Developments. Those houses were, or those projects were already approved by the county before we annexed, and we were sort of stuck with them when we annexed that area. And they're actually being built at a density that, that's higher than what's allowed in the city right now. And so despite the fact that they had entitlements, we downzoned them, even though they're going to be built at a higher density than what's allowed. And so those particular properties, it's more of a correction to make sure that the zoning reflects what is being constructed. And then further.
What, how, what is there, what are they constructing?
Andazio Village is 64 homes, and Blueberry Ridge, I believe, is 109 or 106.
Wow, is that per acre?
It was permitted at the R5 to 9 density in the county, that's what it was zoned. So presumably, it's closer to 9. R8's our closest zone to what is being constructed. Those developers are required to make some improvements to Blueberry, to Ramsey, and to Geiger as part of their project, although it's not nearly as much as what I'd like to see out there to create safe-walking environments and, you know, landscaping on the street. Right now, it's just going to be a vertical curb on one side of the road with a five-foot sidewalk and two travel lanes, and that's, that's the extent of what's being built on Blueberry. The other streets, the improvements are, are even less than that. So I think with that said, oh, the area at the bottom here, there is, this is going high-density residential, and the idea there is that this is in close proximity to commercial services. You've potentially got some views from there that could be taken advantage of with a little bit of, of building height, just to get up above the trees. And so that particular amendment is, would be taking that to high-density residential, which is 20 units per acre. And while that sounds like a lot, 20 units per acre is actually, is still a pretty low density compared to what is occurring in the region. But that's, that is, it's still a multifamily-type development. So I think we can open it up for public testimony?
Does anybody have any comments on map five? Please, can I state your name and address?
My name's Dale Morris, I live at 4655 Geiger Road, Port Orchard. One of my comments is, is that lot being changed to high-density, that's my property, and I, I never asked for, to do that, and I wonder why it's coming about.
That was the discussion that we had about trying to pay for road improvements out there, and to put the capacity there that would actually justify the road improvements. But is, I, I think we've tried to illustrate, if somebody's not happy with what's being proposed, we're open to, to talking about it and then changing it. And so if there's something else that you would like, I would encourage you to, to let us know what that is.
Well, I'd like to change it back. Well, I'd like to change it back to R-4.5, I think it was before.
Which, are you on, you said you're on Geiger Road? So, you're the property here that I'm pointing at on the map? Can you see my little mouse there?
Yes.
So, you're, that's the house that's kind of tucked into the woods?
Yes.
Okay.
So, was that 4.5 before?
That was previously 4.5. Are you the, do you have two properties or one parcel?
Well, I also have the half, two and a half acres just north of, I have both of those pieces of property.
Of these two?
Yes. And also that one there, whoops, there, right there.
Okay. So, you would like to see that stay R-4.5?
Yes.
Okay.
For several reasons. One, one, Geiger Road is a very narrow road and wouldn't support that kind of building.
That, that type of building wouldn't be allowed without full improvements to Geiger Road.
Right. Well, I thought that when you're allowing the building of the 109 houses, that you're proposing to make Geiger Road one-way?
That's not part of any approval that, that's on the record. That there's going to be, at Sedgwick, it's going to be a right-in, right-out on Geiger Road at this time. But it's not, it's not going to be a one-way street.
Well, if it's a right-in, right-out.
It's one-way until you get to the first driveway. Which right now, I think is yours.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be one-way?
That's what the approval states, yes. Well, it's, it's not one-way because you can turn from westbound Sedgwick to northbound Geiger. And you can turn from southbound Geiger onto westbound Sedgwick. So, it's not a one-way street. It's just that you can't make a left out of Geiger or a left into Geiger at that point.
Okay, I guess I need to discuss it a different, with you about that. So, you'll change those back to 4.5?
I'd be happy to change those back to 4.5. I'm, I'd be happy to allow the planning commission to weigh in on that. But I'm going to note it in the record that that's what you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Brock. And I'm the property you were just talking about at the end of, near the end of Blueberry. And you have essentially taken my whole property and made it green belt. That's great for my well, but it's not great if I need to sell my property. I've got, did I say 6.4 acres? So, you know, I think I've got the widest stretch of green belt on this particular map, by the way. And I wanted to say that since I live there, I know the slope. And you see how Blueberry comes down to the end and makes a 90-degree turn straight? If you, if you're right on that corner, that's still flat. I've got a big field, I've got a driveway there. And in the back of my property, I have a big field. And then we have a real drop-off down to the creek. So, while that map may show steep slope, it really doesn't start until, well, if you go straight up from that little dog leg at the end of Blueberry and then kind of curve it. So, actually, there's a lot of room there. And, yes, I have a septic system that drains very well. And I've got a well that's ample for my house and a little mother-in-law cottage that's on my property. So, I would like to see the green belt backed up, geez, at least, you know, I would like to think I've got half my property that I could do something with.
You, you mean redeveloped?
Oh, I'm, I'm not really for developing. I'm just thinking, what if I wanted to sell part of it to my son and let him build a home on there?
And how many acres do you have? Six?
6.4.
And you could build a house for every two acres on the green belt designation?
Is that a sure deal?
You could put three houses in there then? Is that, you want to develop it more than that?
No, I'm just, you know, it just makes me feel real cautious when you say green belt. And I'm for it. I mean, I've lived there since 1980. So, we do get salmon all the way up to my property. If you go right off the end of Blueberry, you can see salmon coming up. So, we're very aware of that.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked that question earlier. Because I could see if, if green belt took your whole use of your property, if, if the designation of green belt said, "You can't do anything with your property anymore now that we've called it a green belt."
Yeah.
Then I would, I would really agree with you.
Okay.
But what we're talking about is, is taking a piece of property and not allowing you to put an apartment building on it or something that's right next to green, to.
Can't you just do that for those properties up above me? Because I can tell you that, that, what they're doing right now and they've already done is, it's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. And to think that right next door, there's going to be a, what did you say, 100 and?
109 is what he said.
109 on that big, that big piece of property? And how many on the other one? And there's no way that our road can handle that as a two-lane road. It's just, it's unbelievable that they allowed that. And the, the slope, you talked about the slope, that, that big piece of property, I think, which must be the 109. From my view, when I drive up the road, it looks like part of that is already sloping down. I don't know about the back section. But, and also opposite, on the opposite side of Blueberry, near that corner there of Geiger, you've got two parcels there that the, the east end, you've got rezoned for medium density. And those are also sloped properties. So, if you're going to put duplexes there or apartment buildings, there's more chance of it impacting the creek just because more people, more runoff, more vehicles, the whole deal. So, I would question those two, that east, east end of those two properties. And I would also question environmentally, I don't, I don't know how they can do that, 109 houses there?
Well, I think like Nick said, that that was something that the county had approved before we even got involved. And once the county.
Is this an EPA deal where we could go to the EPA and say, "Look"? I mean, I didn't know it was going to happen.
This is an issue with state law and the fact that we're the only vest, early vesting state in the nation that allows somebody to freeze their regulations at the time they submit their application. If that had come into the city, we would have never let them, let them got away with, you know, putting in such a substandard road to support those. But that's part of the reason we see the need for upzoning some of this area is, I don't think another developer's going to come in there based on the current density that's allowed and fix those roads. And that's the only way that they're going to get fixed because the city can hardly take care of Bethel, much less taking care of a residential access road. So, if, if we can upzone this to R-8 or R-12 and get somebody in there who's going to build a quality product, which, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're starting work on architectural design standards because we want a higher quality of product in Port Orchard rather than a lot of what's been built in the last 20 and 30 years. So, if we can get better quality with a little bit more intensity and get that to pay for our roads, that may go a long way towards solving some of these problems. But I also wanted to point out, because I think Commissioner Drury was on the right track with talking about the potential under green belt and the potential under R-4.5. R-4.5 would allow 27 units of housing on your property at 4.5 units per acre. So, it's 4.5 times six and change acres, which is a lot for.
Couldn't do it for the slope, because of the slope.
Yeah. So.
So, I guess I question then, if you would want it to be 4.5 and pay the taxes on a lot, on a piece of property that's allowable to build 27 houses, or pay the taxes on a green belt property that allows three houses and that your, the taxing agency would then know that, well, she's never going to be able to put 27 houses on this property. So, the value of that property is, is potentially less than, than the 4.5. You understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying. I just, you know, would you put that in writing? Really?
But that's, you know, that's just, that's just something for you to think about, you know, but that's.
Well, when does this actually get approved or not approved or?
Well, tonight is, we discuss it and we may give a recommendation to the city council, who will ultimately be the one that approves or disapproves on it.
Okay. Well.
See, we just make a recommendation. We, we're citizens of Port Orchard, just like you are.
Okay.
So, think about it.
I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, if you have a preference that you'd like to state while we're in the public hearing, now's the time. Otherwise, I'm happy to talk to you afterwards, but.
Oh, okay.
This, you know, the planning commission recommendation may have set sail, but the, the city council hasn't taken action yet. And so, it's still possible to, to.
And is there no, is there no recourse for that 109 mass going in? I mean, you can't.
You can buy, you can buy the project from them.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, James Chacolo, 1910 Fifth Street, Bremerton. And I have two properties shown on map five. And I would just like to clarify, we're looking at the correct map. The map that was just up there was different than the handout.
Yes, this is the old map and we've updated it since then.
Okay, this is.
So, this is the only one I've got digitally.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
If the new map is correct, that's all I have.
So, which property was yours? Just so I can, I'm going to point to it on the map on the, down here, you can just point on this little map. Okay.
Is this what you referred to as the new map?
Yes.
Okay.
I already spoke, but something came to mind.
Can you just state your name again?
Yep, James Van Cleef at 2864 Herald Drive. Something came to mind when you were talking about green belt usage. And just something to keep in mind when you're determining whether or not to keep something green belt. Yeah, it is developable, but in certain situations like ours where we, we would have developments at R-8 right next to us. And we wouldn't develop that unless other developments were taking place where we could connect a road. Had we left all that green belt, it would have actually feasibly only let us have one house because of the slopes and stuff. And, and around Blackjack Creek with such a steep slope, just because it says you can build two and a half, or two, yeah, two and a half per, or, I'm sorry, whatever it is. One per two, really, you can only get one on our five.
So then, okay, here's my question to, for you then. So, what does it matter what the designation of your property?
If you think of the future and you look at all these developments going on around you and you don't really want to develop. This is my, this is my standing right now. I don't want to develop. This is a heritage property for us. Like, it's been in our family for 60-plus years. So, I'm, I'm trying to protect the property, but also look to our future if we get pushed out and it's not, it's not a great place to live anymore in the future, possibly because of traffic or we want to be more secluded. If we want to develop that property in the future, it leaves us no option.
Okay.
So, it just takes away the possibility. Because at our point, our 4.5 was barely feasible to develop.
So, but you said, you just said that you could only put one house on that property because of?
If it was at.
The topography.
Right, if it was at one per two. But if it's at 4.5 per acre, you could at least use the first acre and a half to get.
I see what you're saying.
Potentially, you know, six houses.
And, but that's, we've changed that in this agreement that you have with the city now.
Absolutely. I'm speaking in general terms. When you think about other areas of green belt, because I'm concerned about the whole city, not just my own, but.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Kragear. I'm owner of some property on map five, 4708 Ramsey. And I have previously, when I first received this proposal, requested in writing that my property remain commercial.
Which property is yours?
Well.
It's right behind West Coast Fitness, right?
Right, right.
Weren't you the, you were the gentleman that was, we were looking to sell it to?
Right. We're trying to work out a solution to our problems in the neighborhood. And we've come up with a, with a, with a solution. We've proposed, proposed it. And I just want to go on record and say, I like this, this will work for us. We won't have to go to any further, hopefully, rezones. And it'll solve some problems. And I just want to go on the record and say that I'm for this proposal. But I wasn't clear prior to this. And I haven't received anything back, but if it's going to go forth as this, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, the map in your hand is the recommendation and I appreciate, appreciate that you reached out to us.
Appreciate your response back too. That was good.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name's Nicholas Geisker. I'm at 2103 Caleb Place. So, I may be a little lost, but on the zoning map, it's going to change it to R-12. Can you kind of tell me what that means? Is that saying they're not going to build there or they're going to build more there?
So, this is the lot that's at the bottom of the hill behind the stormwater pond?
Yes, so it's just me and my neighbor down there.
So, this is more of a clerical correction. When that Blackjack Terrace development was approved by the county, which the county approved it under county regulations, they allowed minimum lot sizes that were smaller than what we allow in the current zone that you have. So, your lot is essentially non-conforming. This is just correcting the zoning map to reflect what was built on that property because those lots are of a size that are only allowed in the R-12 zone. So, it's, it's really just cleaning up our map to match what's actually there.
Okay, so nothing's changing with our area?
No, no, I don't expect any development, anything to, to be different there. It's just matching what's on the ground with what's on the map.
And I think, you know, to clarify what these things mean is, you know, Nick, don't, I mean, we have to present to the state and for the Growth Management Act, a, an ability to accept a certain amount of density within the city limits. And we've got to, have to demonstrate that. Whether or not that actually happens or not, I think is a completely different question.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it. But another part of it would be that if, and I apologize, I forgot your name. But the gentleman who just spoke, if he wanted to add on to his house, but he's pushing up against the maximum lot coverage for R-4.5, this is going to allow him to, to build in accordance with the zone that was in place when his, the subdivision was platted. So, there are other advantages there. It's also when he refinances his house, the bank's going to be able to call the city and the city's going to say, yes, this is a conforming lot. And that way, the bank is going to, you know, be assured that this is not something where the city is intending the house to get torn down and something smaller to get built or, you know, if you're, if you change the zoning to something other than what's on the property, it's because you intend for that property to, to change over time. And with this property, it was just subdivided in the last 10 years. The house is fairly new. We don't intend to see any change there and so, we want the zoning to match what was built.
Any other audience comments?
Hi. My name's Sheila Cronin and I reside at 250 Flower Meadows. And I just, one, want to comment that indeed, streets need to have sidewalks. And I hope that that really will be part of the plan and what goes along in South Flower in Sydney. But also, I don't understand, my neighborhood was built 13 years ago. It's a loop. I think there's 35 houses on the loop. We were zoned 4.5 at the time. And this new zoning rates it at eight. Each house is a little bit, well, mine's a little more than, a little less than a quarter acre because I'm on the corner. But I don't understand why you can change, I don't understand why anybody would want to change it to eight when there's really no room for a mother-in-law on any of our lots. Cars are already parking on the street, it's hard to get by. And I was just hoping that you could keep it at 4.5 because all the houses are built already. And they're less than 15 years old.
Am I highlighting the correct parcel? Oh, can you switch the knob, Carrie? I. Do I have the right one highlighted here, the corner lot up on the screen?
I can't tell by that map, but I could tell you on this one, it's right here. So, it's, it's South Flowers, the side street, and then Flower Meadows is the street.
Yeah. So, that area.
So, these are. I'm on the corner. Those are 4.5, so those are already higher.
Okay, so, this is the same issue as the last gentleman who spoke. Those houses were built at eight units per acre.
4.5.
I think those lot sizes, let me pull up your lot size here real quick. I think those lot sizes, let me pull up your lot size here real quick.
Mine is .23.
Let me pull out my calculator.
And actually, my neighbor here was involved in when that neighborhood was owned, and it was definitely zoned at 4.5.
Huh.
And Mr. Mathis actually owned the property before it was built.
Well, that's, that's certainly interesting. I, I'm not sure what happened with that one, but if, if it's your desire to see that as R4.5, I don't think it's gonna have any bearing on existing or future development.
Right, it has nothing to do with the green belt or anything else. It's just that it's already established, you know, got a few cul-de-sacs in there and everything, but I don't see the sense of making it eight when it's.
Yeah, it looks like it's.
Fully developed at 4.5.
Yeah, it looks like it's consistent with the 4.5 zoning. So if it's the planning commission's desire, I mean, that entire area, whether it's 4.5 or eight, isn't, you know, it's not something that I'm really pushing for. It's probably just a mapping error, or, I'm not really sure. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thanks.
Thank you. Nick?
Yes.
Could the rest of that area be incorrect to you?
I think that one street, and let me find it here. Is that on map five? So I'm, that's very strange. I'm showing it on this map as. You know what? I think that the issue here, when we're printing these maps, the R4.5 and the R8 are coming out almost identical in color, but when you look at them. Yeah, this is, this is just a color error that I think I'd recommend just leaving R4.5. And that's, you want to show what you just highlighted? I, I don't think it was our intent for that to be R8. So the area that's highlighted in this bracket here, those are the stormwater ponds, I believe, as well as the lots that are part of Flower Meadows. So all of that should be 4.5. Everything to the west of there, to the left.
Just, are you talking about just a flower? Or that whole entire area west of, of Greenbelt?
I think it, it would only include the houses fronting Flower Meadows, and then that Hammerhead Street, which I believe is, is that, I can't quite read that. Carnation? Is that Carnation?
Yeah, it looks like Carnation.
That's my question.
So I think the houses that are on Carnation would be R4.5 as well. The couple of larger ones in here, and these, these few long ones that come off of Flower, I, I don't know what those were previously. But I think that everything to the east of that line that we've drawn, we would propose just leaving the way that it was, because it was not our intent to change any of that area. So we'll go back to the zoning map and make sure that that reflects what it was previously.
Okay, so this whole area to the west of the Greenbelt, you didn't plan on making changes to that area?
Well, the, the large parcels to the west of the Greenbelt, I can't speak to, but everything west of that line that was drawn, we certainly didn't propose any changes.
Okay, okay.
The large parcels, I have to find the correct map. Carrie, you have my map, I guess? The final one?
It looks pretty much the same as what.
Yeah, that, those did not change, those bigger parcels.
So those are 4.5 as well?
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll get that corrected, as long as that's what the planning commission would like to include in their recommendation. They, I think, well, yes, they want them to stay at 4.5.
Okay, so I'm Sophia Palermo, and I live at 2201 West Avenue. And it's the large parcel to the east at the top. And I was told when I bought that it was zoned at 4.5, and I want to make sure it stays that way.
So it's the one?
Yeah. Yeah, that one will not change.
That one will stay at 4.5?
Correct.
Okay. Sophia.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going? Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Philip Guzikowski, and I own 3822, 3824 Redemption Ave, Southeast. And. Is this property right here? And I spoke to Nick Bond, and he originally wanted to make the entire lot green belt, and I convinced him that we should only move the green belt out a little bit, because when I originally bought the lot about two and a half years ago, I bought it as an investment opportunity. I'm living there currently. And I had some plans that were made up from previous engineers. For example, right here, you can tell that this particular plan, looks like there's seven more units you can build on. And then this particular plan, obviously, that wouldn't make sense, 24 units. So my only concern is, I've already talked to Nick, and he did actually fix some of the issues I had. So there's about five different plans that already are on the buildable area. And then the exit, the current map that he changed it to, right here. And I'm all for working with the city, and, you know, I'm all green, I want to protect the natural habitat. So I did propose to him that I move the initial green belt, which was there, all the way here, because it's really steep here. You can't build here even if you wanted to, and if you did want to. It, it wouldn't really make sense. So I don't have a problem moving the green belt from here all the way here, because, you know, it's a beautiful area here. I want to keep it nice and pristine. But my only issue was, because I originally bought it, this area right there where my fingernail is, it's pretty flat. So I just want to make sure that my original investment isn't gonna go down the tubes, because it's green belt, and I won't be able to do anything with it. And I understand that if it does go full green belt, you may have the assessor lower the property value a little bit lower. But, you know, as an investment standpoint, that means that in the future, I won't be able to get as much money for the property. And I specifically, when I bought the place, it was on the market for about 56 days, because they wanted a little bit more for the land. So I don't mind paying for the land, because, you know, I wanted to buy it as an investment opportunity, as a retirement, so I could build more houses as I'm aging. But if I won't be able to do that, then the extra $100,000 I spent to kind of buy the land, because it was a little bit overpriced, it, that kind of goes, it diminishes my initial purchase price. And even though houses are starting to rise, because, you know, the markets rebounded, I don't really gain anything from that because of the original loss I'm gonna have to take if I can't build originally what I thought. And when I bought the property originally, I thought it was four and a half units per acre. And now I find out that it's actually even lower density, two units per acre, and I own about seven, seven acres there right now. So that would only mean I could build three units, and there's a duplex on there originally. And now I can't actually build any more duplexes, because the zoning's changed, or the rules have changed again. So I don't mind the green belt expanding, as long as it's not overtaking buildable area where, for my particular case, engineering plans have already been set out to kind of prove, to kind of prove that it is buildable. So I don't mind, you know, that that happens. And another thing for the record, since there's the 64 houses and the 109 being built, they're making improvements on Ramsey, but if they're not gonna make, I mean, on Blueberry, if they're not gonna make improvements on Geiger and, what's the other one?
Ramsey.
Ramsey. Because the problem is now, for example, when you're driving up the hill off Sedgwick to go home, the new marijuana store is creating a lot more traffic than we're used to seeing in that area. So people that go to the store and want to leave and go left, creates a traffic issue. But now imagine you have 109 more houses on top of the 64 being built. And every house nowadays has two to three cars. And the millennials are staying at home now to save money before, you know, because they're getting married later than the baby boomers used to. So every single house is gonna have a lot more cars. So now, when you're driving up the road, and you're gonna try to take left, there's gonna be people, because there isn't a turning lane to going to Geiger, they're gonna stop there and wait, and it's just gonna create a crazy backlog directly from Sedgwick, which you only see now during the rush hour times, you know, around four, four o'clock, four to five. Today was an exception, because it's Labor Day, and everybody on Tuesday wants to come and, you know, do their business. So that's gonna become an issue. Once they start building it out, there needs to be, for the record, some kind of turning lane into Geiger, or maybe another light proposed there, which I don't know if that would make sense, or some kind of runabout for those extra cars to actually go through. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. I just wanted to say that the map that we had proposed, our final recommendation, the boundary between the green belt and the R4.5 zone is the 200-foot elevation topo line, as picked up on the county's LiDAR data. So we drew it right at the top of the slope where it really starts to drop off. And I think, was that acceptable to you?
Yeah, because if you look at the topography map, you can tell it's really steep. Plus, there's another little creek that kind of runs into Blackjack Creek. And, you know, it's a beautiful area there. I don't mind keeping it green belt there. I just don't want my original investment to get hurt, because it's gonna be all green belt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Rowe. Property that we own is at 446 Bethel, on the corner of Blueberry and Bethel Road. My que, I just want to confirm, I guess, more than anything, this comprehensive plan amendment only changes the designation, the zoning and the grant, or in the comprehensive plan designation, doesn't change definitions of zones or uses in zones, correct? Excuse me. Did you hear the, 44, 46 Bethel Road, corner of Blueberry and Bethel?
So you're on the south side of Blueberry?
Yes. And that's a commercial designation. So I, but I, again, I just wanted to confirm that, that there's been no.
You're correct, your property did not change.
Did any zoning categories change in terms of definitions, or is it just designated on the map? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
On map five?
On map five? How about you guys? Questions?
Terry Brock again. I just want to go on record to say that I would like to have part of that green belt taken off. And I will talk to you later.
Okay, so I think it was partially green belt previously, so we can just revert you back to what it was?
Can you show me the map?
Yes.
Side, can you do the side-by-side one?
So your property is this one here where my mouse is. That was what it was previously.
Right.
And then the new map was all green belt. And so if we go back to what it was previously, it'll be the, the flat part, which I think is mostly here, kind of a horseshoe shape. And then I think the slow, it starts going up the hill.
Yes.
Over here, but well, you know, whether that's 4.5 or, or green belt, you know, if you want green belt to follow the topo, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, we can leave it at 4.5.
Just leave it where it was before. And, and, do you guys do this every year?
Not to this extent, but because we, because we annexed this area, it had never really been studied before. And so in advance of doing the Bethel and Sedgwick corridor study, we wanted to make sure that all of our land use designations were in order, so that when we model traffic and we look at what road improvements are gonna be needed, we're using the correct assumptions to plug into that process.
Okay. So if you had another rezone next year, I could come back and say, oh, I changed my mind. I want green belt for my whole property.
You, and you can file your own application if you would like to initiate that as a citizen. This one was just sponsored as more of an area-wide study, where we saw some things that didn't make sense. We wanted to let people know, let them participate, and we're, we're really doing our best to respect the wishes of individual landowners.
I appreciate that, too. And I did have a quick question. You said the tribes were involved with the creek and all that. Has, has that information all come in yet, or is there still more?
I guess it depends what you mean by information. The draft report is out. I haven't checked in with that group for probably a month and a half, and so I don't know whether, where exactly they're at in the process. But the city was involved in that. And it, you know, it was really looking more at trying to identify the biggest impediments to restoration and recovery of sensitive species, and looking at how much wood accumulates within the stream to create habitat for juvenile salmon, and less about land use, although land use was certainly a consideration. It wasn't, the, the, the group was more focused on the science of the fish than the actual, the land use area. But, you know, in our talks with the city, that was the, the thing that we had the most control over. And so we wanted to make sure that what we're allowing is essentially compatible with, with what their findings are showing.
Oh, and I appreciate that, too. I think that's great.
Gentlemen, I live at 943 Southeast Blueberry Road. And my question is not about the zoning of the property, but my concern is, is, as several people have already expressed, a concern about the, the streets in that area. If, it's my understanding that that new development that's gonna go in, Blueberry Ridge, will exit that entire access in and out of that development will come off from Blueberry. Is that correct? That was the old site plan that was proposed by Capstone when they owned it.
That is correct, with the exception that the stormwater maintenance access for their stormwater pond, I think, comes off of Ramsey, but that's a gated gravel.
Right, right. And I'm talking about the access for that 109 houses will be completely dumped onto, onto Blueberry. That's, that's gonna put a tremendous pressure on both Geiger and Ramsey, but primarily Geiger. And I just, I'm interested in what kind of regulations are being put in place in terms of upgrades on those streets, because I have a duly pickup. And I'll be honest with you, this last summer and the last couple of years, I've gone down Blueberry with my clippers, and I've clipped a brush back on the side of the road, so that I could get down there without brushing both sides on Blueberry. Geiger's not much better with the, with the way the bend is in there and the narrow trees on the sides. Is something really being proposed that would upgrade those streets to accommodate that?
So that's a multifaceted answer. If, if development is proposed, they're going to have to do a traffic analysis and look at how much traffic they're putting onto those roads. And if that traffic analysis shows that they're causing a level of service failure, which is a volume of traffic over the, the time delay that that traffic causes, they can be required to make capacity improvements to the roadway. In terms of a substandard roadway, we're looking at the overall condition of the peripheral network to Sedgwick and Bethel as part of our Bethel-Sedgwick corridor study that we're doing right now. And most of you who are here for this particular map five area probably remember the Bethel study that the county did in the year 2000. We're essentially revisiting that, and that plan was very unconstrained in terms of the cost of the road improvements, and frankly, is probably beyond the, the means of Port Orchard to, to implement on any, on the needed timeline. And so we're looking at ways to make Bethel and Sedgwick work better. And that includes looking at how the adjacent streets operate, and whether traffic, the local traffic from those streets uses those streets before, and then gets onto the proper location on Bethel or Sedgwick, so as to not exacerbate traffic on those roads.
Well, traffic on, on Sedgwick is not just at peak hours of time. If you live in that area, you know that. If you live in that area, you know that that's backed up, you know, for hours and hours and hours at an end, and it's both directions. A ferry lets out, and pretty soon that whole area is plugged. So, you know, and when the, when the upgrades were made on Sedgwick a few years ago, it just seemed like rather strange that all they did was regrade. They didn't add additional lanes coming up the hill or anything like that. And, uh, it just seems like, you know, now you're going to throw 109 plus 64 houses in that one little area, and how are you going to get those people out of there? That's just, it's, the streets and the infrastructure that's there is now is not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kirk Doty, and I live at 3842 Redemption Avenue. And, uh, I did submit a written letter, but I wanted to just say it verbally here before you also, that, uh, I have three pieces of property next to Phil there, and would like to request that the zoning, yeah, right there, those three pieces there that are kind of triangular, uh, just request that the, the zoning just return to what it was before the proposal. That's my request. Thank you.
Could, could I ask a quick, couple of questions?
Sure.
What's, those are the ones, you know, that were the triangle ones that were next to the other gentleman's place?
Yeah.
Wait, it's this one?
That one and the two south pieces. That one and the one, yep, those.
The east?
Yes.
So this is what they were before?
Yeah.
So in functional, functionally, what's the difference for you? Is what I...
Just potential for future developments and resale value.
For the ability to do, I mean, you know, I, I'm just asking, like, how many houses per acre do you think you can put on that?
Oh, it's, it's, it's already a critical area zone, so that would be restricted, to be sure. But there are other requirements that go along with that zoning. One of them is setbacks are different between the two different types of zoning. It's more restrictive with green belt, so...
Okay, yeah, because I was just looking, when I was looking at the, the other gentleman's property, and we were, and I was looking at those triangular ones, and they look like they're just completely covered in slope for the most part.
Yeah, they're, they're flat kind of towards the, the farthest part away from Blackjack Creek. They're develop, they can be developed.
How many acres are developable?
Oh, probably less than half.
All right, that was just a question I answered.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, so Nick, there's a, it says a, what's that 200? Is that the 200 feet away from the Blackjack Creek, or?
The 200, excuse me, the 200 is, um, from the center line of the creek is shown on the map on the left here. And so, um, the ordinary high watermark probably pushes that 200 feet a little bit further out. And so that's the shoreline area where anything within that area would have to go for a shoreline permit. Um, outside of that area up at the top here, you know, there's probably, uh, I mean, it's already subdivided, so there's three houses there, uh, whether it's green belt or 4.5. Whether you could subdivide one of those individually further would have to be determined through critical areas analysis and a subdivision application or a short plate application.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this map? Do you have any questions up here? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Do you, I, I guess I'd have one question. Do you have any, Nick, do you have any particular objection to changing it back for the gentleman that was the last speaker from?
I, I don't have an objection to it, because I'm not looking to, to go against an individual landowner's wishes with regard to this. I'm just proposing what seemed to me to be practical solutions, but, you know, I, it's not my property, and I'm not going to force it on somebody. This one, just looking at the topo, it seems like the slopes are very steep once they drop off, and I'm not sure that the line, as it's drawn currently, reflects the topography quite, uh, the way that it, it probably should, but, um, I think it's steep enough that the Critical Areas Code probably would catch anything that would be, you know, too far over the top of the, the bank.
Okay.
So are we moving on to map six?
Yes.
Does anybody wish to make any comments or have questions about map six?
And this is the area to the south of Sedgwick, and I'll just give you a quick overview of what's proposed. And I, I don't think anything has changed on this one, has it, Carrie? So this one has not changed from the initial proposal. But essentially, what we have is, this is probably one of the last large, relatively flat commercial areas where the city could potentially accommodate a, a large commercial-type development, where you could assemble enough parcels and you have few enough constraints that you could see, you know, Target or something large, and that would generate sales tax revenue coming to the city. Currently, these areas are mostly zoned R 20, except for the area right along Sedgwick, which is not actually that deep. It's certainly not deep enough for significant commercial development. Um, so the proposal here is to expand the commercial zone to cover these first few large properties coming back from the road, and then to shift that R 20 development further back, uh, behind that commercial development, where it's kind of nestled in between Highway 16 and, uh, down at the bottom of Geiger. And obviously, any development of R 20 under the existing or future scenario, or any commercial development, would require significant transportation improvement to the developer's expense. We've identified those in our capital facilities plan already, uh, but they would most certainly have to be constructed before development could go forward. So really, it's just expanding the commercial and shifting the location of the R 20 and getting rid of some of the, the R 4.5, uh, in this area. And, um, you know, we meet with developers on a regular basis in our office, and I think that for a long time, and probably because Port Orchard hadn't annexed a lot of Bethel, um, Bethel was always seen as the big commercial corridor. But what we hear in terms of traffic counts and where people want to locate something that potentially would provide goods and services and generate sales tax for the city, Sedgwick is where they want to be. And frankly, until they can even get to Bethel, uh, they're not, nobody's looking at development on Bethel. I mean, the old Home Depot site that was proposed, nobody's even kicking the tires on that one. We do have some interest in doing something in this area, and it's our hope that, and this is a, Sedgwick's a state highway, so the state's going to dictate what improvements are needed there. But we've been talking to the state, and as part of our corridor study, we're helping to memorialize what the community wants and what is going to be sufficient or insufficient to serve future development. But we need these initial assumptions to plug into that study before, uh, we can get the outcome out of that that we'd like to see. Anybody here for area fi, uh, six?
Any questions?
Well, it opened up through...
I did.
Oh.
So does anybody have questions up for six? Map six? All right. So we'll move on to map seven.
Okay, and this is, of course, the McCormick Woods Amendment. And if you look at this map, uh, as it initially went out, this, this big piece of red property, which, uh, actually was meant to only be the northernmost two acres, and so that had been revised, uh, when this first went out in your packet, um, that amendment has been withdrawn, and so this will remain R eight. And my understanding is that McCormick Communities LLC will be reaching out to the homeowners' association, uh, to pursue a community center through a conditional use permit process. And so I would expect that that application will be underway by the end of the year, but I think they want to have some community meetings first. The only other changes shown on this map are the two blue pieces, which, one of these is a sewer lift station that's currently in existence that, um, is not zoned for utilities. It's zoned essentially for residential development, which the city owns, and the city has no interest in residential development. We're just making the zone match what is out there. The other one is the, uh, South Kitsap Fire and Rescue property that is, uh, within the McCormick Village Park area. And this was a piece of property that was required at the time that the county approved McCormick Woods. Uh, they required a dedication of land for a future fire station. And so this was the property that had been identified for that. It was conveyed to the fire district, and it sits dormant, essentially waiting for the fire district to determine that there is a need for that additional fire station, which likely won't occur until McCormick West or McCormick North gets constructed. But at some point, they see the need to have a second fire station out there to be in closer proximity to, uh, a fairly large population, uh, out there. So pretty straightforward changes, and, um, it's consistent with the underlying ownership, and it's really just about the, what public uses are allowed on those properties. The, the park currently is green belt, and that fire station was zoned green belt, um, which does not allow for fire stations. And that was simply an error when we annexed that we should have designated that for community facility, but we didn't.
So my map seven has that, one area has a commercial change to commerce, that one right there.
You're looking at the commercial, the land use map versus the zoning map?
No, the comprehensive plan map. And then it was, on the zoning map, it's, it's mixed use.
Yeah, mixed use is a zone that's allowed in the commercial designation.
But you have a, it's dark, it's a...
It's cross-hatched there. That's just, this is a, um, it just isn't coming out at the same color. I think it's either our projector or...
Okay.
Uh, some other issue, but that hasn't changed.
And that's not changing at all? That's what it is?
Correct.
At this point, okay.
There's red on this map, but not on these maps?
The final map that we sent you, that we distributed today as well, I don't remember, I think the one that went out in the packet as well.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's, they're no longer...
Here's the, they pulled.
They're no longer asking for that.
So this is a good map?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
That's gone.
That's gone?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a line here.
Okay.
So the proposed commercial designation of that is off the table?
That's off the table, but you will be hearing from the developer about, uh, meeting with the community to talk about building a community center on the north end of that, near the clubhouse.
People were talking about that. Six months ago, we talked about that. That was fine.
Okay.
But the rest of the...
Yep.
This guy says I don't... He used to work with him.
Any, is there any testimony on map seven? Anybody wish to speak?
I live at 4668 Chanting Circle, which is the sixth house on the left there, on the left-hand side. I'm right to the green belt. A couple of things, uh, kind of caught off guard by the fire station, uh, being there. Uh, the map that was mailed to us, my neighbor will get into, I think you live kind of in our neck of the woods.
Yeah, that was probably on the Facebook page.
Yeah. So, uh, kind of caught off guard there. Within those first seven houses there, kind of loops out on Chanting, there's, I think I figured, 22 to 25 children. Six of them are mine. Anyway, putting a fire station there, kind of, I don't know what the rules are. Are we going to get woken up in the middle of the night? Uh, because obviously, it's very loud. Uh, so we were kind of shocked by that. There was a map that was mailed to us. Uh, it was all black and white. It didn't look anything like this. So my neighbor came over last night and said, hey, did you realize? Because a lot of people in our, on our street thinks it has some, this had something to do with the park that's getting built. And now when I look it up, this partial parcel map here from the county assessors, that Kitsap County Fire District is actually, that property takes up the existing, um, road into the park, parks parking lot. And so, I mean, obviously, you'd have to redesign and, you know, figure out what you're going to do at that point. So, you know, you did say that it's a, a further down the line proposal, so I don't know how much...
Twenty years down the line? I mean, I think it's... It's likely 20 years down the line, or at least 10. I, I know that they have no immediate plans to do anything. We're really just fixing that on the map and, uh, making sure it's reflected. The McCormick Village Park plan actually showed this as a fire station, which that's already adopted in our comprehensive plan. It's just that the comprehensive plan land use map showed it as green belt.
Okay. And the only other comment I'd have is on the existing and proposed, either one you want to look at. I see where you took the green belt from. You took it from our area, put it over there by Bethel, so just a little joke there.
Oh.
So, anyway, I just thought that was interesting. I know above Chanting Circle, that's owned by the city of Birmingham, further up, but, uh, wondering why the, the green belt was kind of taken away.
Okay. Yeah, that, that area, and I, I apologize, I forgot to mention that, this is owned, this is actually part of the McCormick North approval that's already entitled. Um, we just had that mapped incorrectly, as well as being part of the park, which is still owned by McCormick Communities LLC. And so it's consistent with their development approval.
Hi, my name's Alan Bailey, and I live at 4662 Chanting Circle, which is actually next to Adams. It's the seventh, seventh house there. And, um, my main concern was the fire station as well. I am feeling better if it is not going to be built in the, in the near future, because I do have significant concerns about a, a fire station, and particularly the noise. I also did have, um, some challenges with the way that, with the way that we were notified, because the map is, is definitely different. It was all black. So if you look at this map, there's no way to really tell that there were any actual zoning changes. So, um, most people, as Adam said, thought that if they got notices, they thought that this had to do possibly with the park. So I just happened to call last week, because I got that postcard about the meeting, and the, um, planning, the staff at the planning commission basically nicely told me what the particular elements were. So, this map, you know, this map that we were sent doesn't look at all like this. And it's difficult to make a decision on something, you know, kind of if you don't have accurate information. So I just wanted to touch on that. The, the other thing about, um, I do have, even though it, it sounds like it's, it's required, um, as far, you know, as, having the fire station as far as all the development in that area, I do have concerns overall about the amount of development, um, you know, on the maps. There's a, you know, the housing is definitely getting denser and denser, and it's kind of hard to find out sort of when these plans are. Like, I just learned, when I looked at these maps, I just learned about the sort of high-density housing, which is further up Clifton Road. That's the, um, there's another map that shows it, that's basically, that's basically in the brown.
Oh, that's the, the...
Yeah, that's by Campus Parkway. So I'm not sure if there are plans for that, or is that a, is that a zoning change? Or is that a, this is, this is the comprehensive, there's a zoning map for seven, and then there's a comprehensive plan map for seven. So I wasn't sure...
That property is not changing, and they already have the entitlement there. So I think the northern portion, the northern, northwest corner of the brown, uh, roughly one quarter of that, I think there's 64 houses there. There's more mixed apartments along Clifton, and then I, I think there's some critical areas kind of on the northeast side of that. But all of that was approved in the county as part of the McCormick North approval, which we inherited and is still alive in terms of an entitlement. And, um, it's, uh, you know, ultimately, it's the county's regulations from years ago that are applying to whatever's... are applying to whatever's happening there. I think the developer is interested in talking to the community when they finally do McCormick North and coming up with something that will be an asset out there more so than something that isn't wanted. But of course, at the end of the day, it's also got a, you know, it's got a pencil for them. And, you know, in our transportation plan, just in terms of the, the improvements that are needed to support this, we need controlled intersections at Figley. Campus Parkway, which is between the mixed-use area and the, the park, that road is supposed to be improved, and there's currently, at the end of Campus Parkway, there's a project in Bremerton that's going through review right now for 400 homes in Bremerton. And so we've been reaching out to Bremerton and saying, "Hey, no way unless you guys contribute to the improvements in Port Orchard." You know, this is not something that can be supported by our current level of, of infrastructure. So we're, we're very aware of that, and we're, we're definitely fighting for everything that we can get out of new development as it comes in.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate that explanation. Because I'm kind of coming into this, I just sort of started looking at it last week, and, you know, I'm clearly not a zoning expert. I did, I just wanted to, because I know that things are going to be zoned, and even if the fire department is, it's, you know, it's, it's long-term. I do feel like, because the zoning is being changed, that I would like to put on the record some of the questions that I would have for this type of facility. And I know that, as the planning commission, you can't answer those questions, but there's, I, I would like to pose those questions and, and talk about very briefly other potential impacts. So, for example, as far as the fire station, some of the questions that I have are, what is the yearly and average monthly number of emergency calls for this type of station? Are there seasonal variations in the frequency of the calls? What type of alarm sirens will be activated when emergency response is initiated? Will there be emergency communications that are externally broadcast from the station, which happens sometimes? They have what they call external comms. Will there be limitations to noise levels between 10:00 and 7:00 a.m.? There are, as Adam said, there's a lot of small children that are immediately in that area. There are also people that work at the shipyard and in the armed forces that also work there. So, do we want them being woken up at 3:00 in the morning? Also, will there be any, it is a greenbelt, and we, there's sort of a, a wetland right behind us, which, which we love, and there's kind of frogs and peepers, and, you know, there's wildlife. So, another question that I have is, will there be any toxic chemicals used, and how will this affect the greenbelt wetlands? And finally, were there any wetland stream studies completed and permits issued for the zoning changes? So, I know these are kind of rhetorical questions, but I just wanted to get them on the record. And then finally, as far as the fire station, my wife is a school bus driver, so she's responsible for, you know, safely bringing dozens of schoolchildren, you know, every day, and negotiating a 40-foot bus in the middle of traffic, you know, among hundreds of motorists. So, if she were woken up by sirens or something like that, she still has to get up and go to work at, basically at 5:00 a.m. So, I understand that, you know, this isn't your area of expertise, but I appreciate the time just being able to put these on the record. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can just, I, I'd like to just provide you some information on that. If a fire station were to be built at this site, the fire station has to come in and apply to the city, and they're going to go through what's called SEPA review, which is the State Environmental Policy Act. So they fill out an environmental checklist, and they're going to provide all of that information at the time that they actually apply to do a project. And if there are significant impacts, they can be made to mitigate those impacts through conditions. And those conditions that can be attached to their approval would be something just like what you said about not running the sirens after 9:00 p.m., or installing, you know, a controlled driveway where there's going to be an alert to tell drivers to slow down. Wetland studies are required, but we have already delineated those as part of the park project. So all of those things get reviewed at the time that there's actually a proposal for development. Right now, the only proposal is to change from greenbelt to community facility, and presumably, you know, I think it's highly unlikely, but if the fire district decided that they wanted to sell this property to, you know, the city for some other improvement, if we needed to put a well there or a water tank, those are other uses that could occur. So, the review at this point is rather limited, because there's not a real specific proposal.
Sure.
And that would absolutely get addressed at a later date when there is something more concrete...
Okay.
Before us.
No, I appreciate that. Will, would there be a public comment period for that as well?
The threshold for public comment on something like that is going to be, if the building is more than 4,000 square feet, that's the current threshold for a commercial-type occupancy, which a fire station would be, then SEPA review is required. It's also required if they're providing more than, I think, 20 parking stalls for employees. So, unless it's a really small fire station, there's absolutely going to be a SEPA review process, and there's other thi, other things that could potentially trigger it. I think almost in all cases, you would see SEPA review. I can't imagine a fire station smaller than that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I, I definitely feel a lot better. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, is there a... Is there any other questions or comments on Map Seven? Is there any questions or comments from up here? Want me to close it?
No, we're going to go back to Map One, because we started on Four. But One, Two, and Three are really short, I promise.
Okay.
So, if we can go to Map One, which I'm going to open here on my computer. This map amendment involved only one property, and it's the red one here, where my mouse is, that is turning to brown. And after meeting with the applicant, we determined that we would hold off on this amendment for now, because we're not sure that, that we want this to happen at this time. We're going to look at it again in the future, I think. But the reason that we initiated this is the city, is the building that is there was determined to be illegal non-conforming use earlier this year. And it's a triplex on a piece of property that only allows up to a duplex. It's currently zoned commercial. It's also in the shoreline area, and so amending designations on the waterfront like this, we wanted to consider it a little bit more as well. So we're just proposing not to move forward with this one at this time, and the staff recommendation map shows it staying as multifamily for now, and it's sort of a transitional property between the existing commercial, I think there's a gym here, and then there's that little strip mall development across from the old Safeway, what's the name of that shopping center now? Bayside?
West Bay.
Yeah, so that's just across from West Bay. So that one is not changing, and I know the owner of this property is here if he wishes to comment.
One, Two, Mr.?
Okay. Anybody else wish to comment on this one?
So there's no change?
The change is off the table.
Okay, alright.
Moving on to Map Number Two, this is another single property that's changing, and this one is always hard for me to find. I believe it's on DeKalb. My mouse is on it right here. It's currently red, and it's going to brown, which is going from commercial to multifamily. And the reason for that is that DeKalb, where the road is improved, is up on top of the hill, and Bethel is down at the bottom of the hill. And so that's, that property, which is zoned commercial, is actually accessed through a residential street. And so we didn't see, feel like a residential property should be at the, or a commercial property should be at the dead end of a residential street. And so this is really just correcting for the reality of that, that roadway. And I believe we've been in contact with the owner on that one, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And I think everything's okay there. I don't know if there's anybody that wishes to comment on this one, but now is your opportunity.
Which side of DeKalb is that?
It's on the south side of DeKalb. It's the second-to-last property before you hit Bethel, but it's up on the hill rather than at the bottom of the hill.
Well, and it looks like you changed the Rockwell Apartments to high-density residential as well.
Um, which one is the Rockwell Apartment?
On Rockwell, at the corner.
Top left, right off Bay Street.
Am I, is my mouse...
Yeah, right there.
That one?
Because it didn't...
That's, that didn't change. It just, I think the coloration came out.
Well, in my existing, I got in the, it's yellow there and then brown there.
Where's the final map? Oh, you know what? This one was an issue where the zoning map showed it as multifamily, but the comprehensive plan map showed it as a single family, and I believe this is just a correction to match the zoning and the current use, and...
Which makes total sense, yes.
Correct.
I was just...
But yeah, thank, good, good observation.
I used to be really good at that. What was that, at the doctor's office? Highlights, that's...
No questions on Map Two. We can move on to Map Number Three. This is the final set of amendments that are before us, and this is an issue where, this is Retsal and Mile Hill. Currently, the properties on Retsal, going all the way back to the Kitsap Transit Bus Facility, are zoned commercial. However, most of the properties in there are residential, especially on the east side of the road and on the north end of that strip. And we've got, we've got at least one property back there that the owners came to us because they wanted to fix the property, but because they were zoned commercial, and they had a residential house, it was a non-conforming use, and they were actually unable to improve their property, because it was not zoned for residential anymore. And so, we looked at this a few years ago, the staff brought this forward, and actually the neighborhood was pretty opposed to changing this. However, I think this time around, we, we contacted people, and I think we've heard from most everybody that they are comfortable with this, but I'll, I'll let the public provide their testimony and speak for themselves if they have comments here. The, the idea here is to change it from commercial to R-12, which would allow for potentially a little bit of redevelopment, and certainly the ability to improve existing single-family residences and make them nicer.
Is there any public comments or questions on Map One, Two, or Three?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Brown, and we recently purchased 1521 Retsal Road. It was our first home purchase, and we found out a few months after it was purchased that we got a home loan on a commercial property, which is pretty ridiculous. And just one of those random things, I forgot to check. Apparently, my real estate agent forgot to check, and the other real estate agent just said it was a house, well, it looks like a house, it smells like a house, and, and then the appraiser didn't check. So, we would really like it to be zoned like a house. That would be really cool, so someday we could sell it like a house. And that's it.
Hi, I'm Rebecca's, better half, or not. And Andrew Brown, Andrew Brown, sorry. And a couple homes up, the, the house is actually falling down. It's non-livable. It's rotten away, it's rotten, fallen down. The gentleman wants to fix the house up and sell it. A few years back, they, he wanted to develop it a multi-house, like duplex or triplex or something like that. He realized it just wasn't cost-effective, so he just wants his money back in that one, just to put a house, you know, bring it up to standards. It's, you know, we, we need houses here in Port Orchard, we need residents, you know, there's tons of commercial property that are sitting empty, nothing happened to them all over Port Orchard right now, and housing is a big need. Also, I, I would like to put a shed on my garage someday, too, and as a commercial property, I will not be able to do that.
It's very hard.
Anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So Andrew, are you and Rebecca, are you in this proposed change area from commercial?
Yes, we're the last one on the right hand, on the...
Thank you.
East, east side, yeah, well, the most southern east.
Let's go. In the brown?
Yeah, right here.
This?
Yeah.
Oh, this?
Right here.
Any other questions or comments on Maps One, Two, or Three? Any up here?
No.
Alright. So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing for the 2017 comprehensive plan amendments.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Would you guys be willing to entertain a five-minute break? Because I've been talking a lot and drinking a lot of water over here.